Welcome back. Item B2 is review and adopt draft funding recommendations for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program. Cindy Jason is the planner for this. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this is a public hearing for the council to review and adopt draft funding recommendations for the city's annual allocation of 2016 Community Development Block Grant funds. The total estimated 2016 allocation for this year that we've been notified by the county is $77,068.9, with the county's administrative share at about $10,000, and that leaves a net amount of little over $67,000 for the city to make funding recommendations based The City of Morro Bay has been a participant with what's called the Urban County Consortium. It's a consortium of the county and various cities in the county for the purpose of receiving federal block grant funds. Since the city's participation with the 2012 year, on the screen is a list of projects that the city has funded in the past, just for your reference. There are three projects. These include the Public Works Handicapped Accessibility, also known as the Sidewalk Gap Closure Program, which has funded construction of new sidewalks primarily in the downtown area, north downtown area. Also, Capslow for the Prado Day Center, providing homeless services. And Senior Nutrition Program has been funded twice for noontime meals to senior citizens. This year, the 2016 year started in the fall, a couple of months ago, with public workshops. And as of the application deadline date, the city received four applications, which include, this is a screenshot of the staff report that's on the screen, the applications were for the Public Works Sidewalk Gap Closure Program, applications by Capslow, CASA of Slow County, and Sunny Acres Slow Housing. In reviewing the applications that staff received, we consulted with county planning staff for determination of what was eligible per federal requirements. County provided guidance to staff and revealed that not all the applications were eligible or met federal local guidelines based on how they were submitted. And so staff based its recommendation and an alternative recommendation to the council and its staff report. And staff's recommendation is to fund the Public Works Sidewalk Gap Closure Project. This public accessibility project does support City Council Goal Number Two, and that's how staff made its recommendation. Another aspect of the CDBG program that is a little bit different, and I prepared a slide, I have several points to go through on this, just for purposes of full discussion, that is in addition to staff's recommendation for the 2016 funding recommendations. After applications were submitted, county staff reached out to city staff regarding an opportunity for the City of Morro Bay to take an advance on future year allocations of block grant funds. And just as brief background, part of the federal requirements for the county, who is the actual grantee, they have the grantee relationship with HUD. The cities are considered sub-grantees or sub-receipients. The county has expenditure deadlines that they need to meet, otherwise they risk penalties by HUD for non-performance. And so what we found out is that the City of Atascadero, as one of those sub-receipients, has an unspent balance anywhere between $102,000 to $177,000 that they are required to spend by April 30th, and likely will not be able to meet that deadline. And so the county has an interest in making sure that they meet these deadlines. They reached out to county staff because the Public Works Department does have a shovel-ready project, namely the Sidewalk Gap Closure Project. That's been funded the last three years, and Public Works staff did indicate that they would be able to meet this expenditure deadline. The benefit for the city is that, of course, we can get a jump start on meeting that City Council Goal Number Two, improving sidewalks. And of course, from a construction cost perspective, the cost of concrete today is a lot less than it's going to be in subsequent years. The amount of funds that Morro Bay advances, so if the city were to pursue such an advance arrangement, what would happen is that it would need to be repaid to the City of Atascadero through the county with future year allocations. Right now, the city's allocation averages about $65,000 every year, and so it's likely that it would take two years to repay that. How this advance agreement gets structured is still open. The terms are still open. The city could choose to use its entire 2017 and 2018 allocations to repay that advance, or could reserve a portion of future year allocations if there are future public service applications that were submitted. And since the city's participation, every year we've gotten at least one or two public service activity applications for funding. And also, another option is the City of Morro Bay could choose to reserve some of these future allocations to cover staff administrative costs. However the loan terms get worked out, staff would just like to point out that the way that this block grant program is structured is that county staff is still responsible for grant administration. So there is minimal time on the part of city staff. Also important to note is that prior to any such agreements, the Atascadero City Council and both the county board supervisors would need to also agree to this. What city staff has learned is that Atascadero staff is supportive of the arrangement, but city staff is presenting it to you tonight so that we can get feedback from the city council. And then the last point is that, the last bullet that you'll see on the slide, is that something else that's important to note is that the city's participation agreement that we have with the county currently expires on June 30th, 2018. It's a three-year agreement. And so if the city were interested in doing a multi-year or an advance on CDBG funds, that agreement would likely need to be extended to accommodate that advance repayment. So in conclusion, staff has two recommendations. The first is to make the draft funding recommendations based on adopted City Council Goals. As you see on the screen, adopt the draft funding recommendations for the pedestrian accessibility sidewalk project. For this year, that's estimated to be $62,151, with program administration for a total funding allocation of $67,589. And then authorize the city manager to make pro-rata adjustments based on any final funding allocations we get. And typically, the city council hears the final funding recommendations in the spring of every year. Every year, that usually gets tweaked a little bit. The second recommendation is that staff is recommending that council direct staff to pursue an advance of CEBG funds for the 2017 and 2018 program years, potentially 2019, to execute additional ADA accessibility improvements using the existing sidewalk gap closure construction contract that the city has, and that is with Williams Concrete and General Engineering. With that, I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, Cindy. Thanks very much. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Johnson, would you like to start off with any questions?
I just have a general question. Why is this such a complicated process? Was it worth the money? No, I'm teasing, but realistically, really, I think if the public were reading the staff report, it just goes on forever. Is it just because it's a federal program and it is well worth our dollars? I mean, it looks like if we can get some of this accomplished, it is well worth our time, but just kind of just a short answer to why it's so complicated.
Sure, it's the federal government. The block grant program has been around for 40 years. They've had time to add more regulations.
John? Noah? And the other cities that participate in this in the county are?
They are: City of Paso Robos, Atascadero, Pismo Beach, Aurora Grande, City of Slow, and then County of Slow, of course.
Okay. And is there any reason why, when I look at the one section here for Prado Day Center, they've got revenues in their budget, and the City of Morro Bay, Slow County contributes, or at least they've applied, and City of Morro Bay. So I'm just looking at their proposed budget for 2016, '17, and it's not like you have the City of Pismo or any of the other cities in there. That's on, yeah, it's attachment to. So I guess I'm just curious, are we the only applicant from Prado Day Center for the CDBG grant?
No, they apply to all of the cities. They tailor their application for each city. And so typically, applicants can do it either way. They can show whether or not all the cities that they're applying to, or if they're just applying to one. For this particular one, I have not seen the other applications, but that's my understanding.
Okay. I guess if there's any further discussion about that, I'll just reserve my comments for that. With that, I'll open up for public comment. For anybody to like to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, oh, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Susan Graves, and I'm here to speak on behalf of CASA of San Luis Obispo I'm here asking that the council reconsider our application for the 2016 funding in the amount of $8,000. And I want to just give you a little bit of additional info that might help you in deciding whether or not you can reconsider. Our original application was submitted to the county on the due date of October 23rd. On November 17th, we received a call from Matt Leal and Tony Navarro with the county asking for additional information to clarify points on our application. We had a lengthy phone conference with them, myself and our director Teresa Tardif. We also submitted additional information that they had requested via email. All of this was to clarify our position or our ability of providing a direct benefit to the children that we serve, which is a necessary component for these funds. I'd like the council to consider a few points. We recruit and train community volunteers to advocate for abused and neglected children in our county. We then assist in matching them with a youth which they advocate for and supervise them. Right now, 105 volunteers are assigned to 145 children. There are still over 330 children on the waitlist to be assigned to volunteer. Children that are removed from their homes in San Luis Obispo County under the court's jurisdiction are traditionally placed into foster care. Many of them are experiencing four, five, or six placements during their time in foster care. It is the CASA advocate who is a critical component in this whole situation. They become the child's voice in court. They advocate only for the child and their needs, and to help them achieve their best interests, and ultimately to be placed in a secure, safe, permanent home. CASA has 11 paid staff members, but we have over 100 volunteers that provide a direct service benefit to each child. If you look at the numbers, this allows us to leverage our organizational impact by the use of volunteers, and really provides a huge bang for the buck as far as the services we're able to provide utilizing our dedicated volunteers. Our supervisors know the legal system, they manage the court documents, they know the foster care system, and they have a direct impact on the outcome of each child's case. Our paid supervisors not only do case management, they do visits to the child's home, they accompany the volunteer on the first initial visit, they are in contact and confer with the children when they have to appear in court. They're also instrumental in arranging extracurricular things that the child may have never experienced. So we do have a direct benefit that is provided by our paid staff as well as our volunteers.
I have to ask you to conclude here.
Yes, I encourage you to revisit our application, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And look to my right, Mr. Heading, you want to start off any conversations on this?
Discussion?
Yeah, okay.
I would support the staff report. I have no further questions or issues. Thanks.
Okay, Noah?
I think that the approach of the advance is smart, considering the time cost of money and the ability to mobilize and get as much done as possible on the gap closures, which we know are a big challenge here, and we have an opportunity here to help catch up on that. So I'd support the 2017 and '18 and a possible '19 approach on that advance. I'm open to some discussion about whether or not to reserve a portion for other public benefit. I know in the past, we've decided to approach the support of very specific and worthy causes like senior nutrition through the budget process rather than through this, just to maximize the administrative component of it and not spread it out so much that it starts to water down the effectiveness. So I think I'm more inclined to go that route, as we did, I believe, last year, and focus all this on gap closure and know that we're going to have discussion in our budget process, and specifically notice any applicant here that we do invite them to submit requests during our budget and goal setting to be considered that way, as we did in the past, and then did follow through with some assistance. So I think that would probably be the cleanest way to do this.
Thanks, Noah. Matt? Noah? Christine?
Yeah, I think that it's great to have people come out and speak about important work that CASA does. Actually, I was in Leadership Slow with your executive director, so I know a lot about CASA, but I'm not sure everyone does. So it's good to hear the soapbox moment you have to talk about it. But I'd like to ask staff, and we have discussed this, like this is like our third year going through, and the donation amount doesn't match the effort that it takes to manage the donation. Could you just kind of explain that? It's just kind of good. It's not that we're cold-hearted, it's just that we have to maximize the funds.
Sure. So in past years, the city's allocation was smaller. Our agreement with the county requires that we fund no less than $8,000 toward public service activities. There's also this other federal regulation that says you can't spend more than 15% of your allocation on public services. And so every year, that 15% magic number was a number that was less than $8,000. And so the city was a bit hamstrung in being able to fund public service activities. As the years have gone by, and you'll see there's a number quoted in the staff report, we're getting slightly more and more money, so that this year, that 15% max number is actually about $11,600. So the city could fund, and like we did, I believe it was last year, or two years ago, with senior nutrition, the city could choose to fund a public service activity, and they wouldn't be up against that $8,000 limitation. So there's that. And Capslow, though, as the public service activity that staff recommended for funding, they applied for a lesser number. I believe that the amount that they applied for is $8,600. And just as a point of clarification for Mayor Irons, I have a list of every application that the county received for every jurisdiction, and Capslow did apply to both Paso Robos and Pismo, along with Morro Bay. So I did confirm that.
Okay, great. I think that, this is what I mean about the complicated process. I think that a lot of social service agencies see this as a way to make visits to cities and get funding, and I know sometimes they do, but I think ultimately, for the City of Morro Bay, the best time to do that, and we've been kind of directing people to the beginning of our budget process, which is in February. So you can reach out to any one of us, and we can make sure you get connected, then you can come and do the same thing, but do it at a time where we can allocate money. Because we find that funds like this better serve our overall community if we put them into things like what you've explained in the staff report, and that's what I'm willing to support this year, but we don't want to lose touch with great organizations. So thanks. I'm willing to support the staff report, as is, encouraging the multi-year collaboration.
Thanks for those comments, and I would concur. In the history, at least when we were first doing CDBG, this particular staff report, it was almost all dedicated to nonprofits or applicants, and then there was the management fee, and the city really, it was just more of a dispersment of funds to a lot of the NASA nonprofits. And considering some of the financial constraints and challenges, it was determined, hey, let's use this a little bit more holistically, and we got into this role of filling the gap as a way to fund that, and that's what we've kind of shifted our focus on. So very well explained by Councilmember Johnson, and I would support staff recommendation as well. I do have one question for staff, and as far as some of the applicants, is it strictly, how do they understand the applications or this is available? Is there any outreach from staff particularly?
Yes, the county has a public participation plan. It's actually approved by HUD, and it outlines the steps that the counties and the, excuse me, the county and the cities take as far as public participation. It's a huge component of the block grant program, and every fall, we do public needs assessment workshops. We invite the community, and they're done at multiple locations throughout the county. And that's when we are reaching out to these types of agencies, or just regular citizens, to say, what are your needs? How do you think we should spend this money?
Yeah. I think considering some of the five-year strategic planning the city's looking at as far as budget and other endeavors, economic development, probably it'd be helpful to, when I see one of these, as far as specifically Capslow, I think it'd be interesting if the application identified, hey, if seven cities were involved in this application, instead of, you know, when I looked at this sheet here, on what page is that? Let me get to it. So it had Morro Bay as the only city for $8,600. If there were seven cities even at $2,000 each, that'd be 14, that'd be much more. But you know, there's no real way of knowing other cities want to participate in that way. Just some comments. I don't know if you have any kind of interaction or way to communicate that to some of the applicants. Even under our budget determination, we get into that part. Those are my only comments. I would take a motion for staff recommendation. Is there any? I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation then. If there's nobody going to do it, I'll take a, it was kind of silent there, it was like a radio, so don't let that happen. Okay. Motion for staff recommendation and to include the advanced, support the advanced planning in that for the CDBG funds for 2017 through '19 programs to execute additional ADA accessible improvements.
Second?
And if I could say, it's via Resolution 7515, please.
And include Resolution 7515? Okay, I will amend my motion to include Resolution 7515.
Second amended.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Heading. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Just kind of rushing through that a little bit, sorry about that. So we've got, I think we've got some folks for the senior program out there, and I just want to wonder, I'm just trying to wonder whether or not we should consider the senior, excuse me, the senior citizens volunteer, senior van services, our last item. I don't know if we have people waiting for that, if we should bump that up before this next item.
We don't want sleepy drivers on the.
Is there anybody waiting for that particular item? Seeing none? Okay.
Yeah, there are.
Okay.
Someone might be waiting for C1 as well.
Okay, so let's go through item C1, and then we'll go directly to our senior citizens' van service, and then we'll do the community choice aggregation last. Okay? That sounds good. So we'll move to item C1. Determination regarding the sale of city property on Mendora Street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself because the project is too close to my residence.
Okay, Mr. Buckingham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So just go through this fairly short presentation. This is an item regarding the sale or determination of the potential sale of city property on Mendora Street. In March 2015, the council directed the sale of certain city-owned properties, of which this lot was one. The city has received multiple offers for the purchase of the vacant lot on Mendora Street, and the Planning Commission has found the sale of that lot consistent with our general plan. So those are the key items that sort of need to occur for the sale to be approved. The city received four offers. Offer number one is to purchase the property for $39,000 with a 30-day escrow. The property owner would, it's the adjacent property owner who had then combined the vacant lot of Mendora with his existing property. Offer number two is an offer to purchase the property for $160,000 with a 15-day close of escrow, with the intention of further developing the lot with a single-family home. Offer number three is very similar. It's an offer to purchase the property for $170,000 with a 14-day close of escrow, and again, with the intention to build a lot, or develop a lot with a single-family home, or actually was described as a beach cottage in other communication we've received. Offer number four was an offer to purchase, or is an offer to purchase the property for $175,000 with a 30-day escrow. That offer, however, is non-conforming with our land use plans. There's a contingency that we must give approval to allow a house to be built on nine-foot concrete piers with parking underneath. So that offer, while a high offer, is non-conforming with our land use plans. Based on that, staff recommends that the council approve the sale of the vacant city lot to the highest conforming offer, and that highest conforming offer is number three, a purchase price of $170,000 with a 14-day close of escrow. And I would, I'll just stop there.
All right, great. Any questions from council?
I just have one to staff, just to let you talk about the ability to build a conforming home on the lot in question, given the different utilities and so forth.
It was part of the discussion that the Planning Commission had before it made its finding, and even in making that finding that it was consistent with the general plan, they added a separate finding related to the fact that any forthcoming development on the lot should be conforming, because they didn't think that there was any justification for exceptions or variances for future development of the lot. Again, that's sort of a non-binding finding, because anybody can submit an application that would include those types of things, but they were putting it out there so people would be made aware. As far as the development potential of the house, you know, you're looking at a 950-ish square foot home with a single-car garage, about a, and the lots, what is it, 2,300 square feet or so, so allows you for a house about that size.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I do have a question, Scott. And the lot size is consistent with the other lots in that area?
It's a little smaller, you know, it's probably, but it's in line with some of the houses that are across the lot, not houses, lots, sorry, it's getting late, lots on the east side of the freeway. So it's a little bit smaller than some of the other ones that are over there. So you'll get a house that's slightly smaller, about a couple of hundred square feet.
And I think brought up earlier, talking about with the utilities and water, that would be no problem dealing with that issue, with that lot size?
It's just something that they have to design around. The water line that runs down the eastern property line is that property line that it butts the Highway 1 right-of-way. It sits about approximately in the center of what would be a five-foot setback over there anyway. We have our Public Works Director here sitting next to me, Rob Blavick. We discussed it at length, the water line that runs through that area is not very deep, and so felt that, you know, we will probably, we will be requiring, you know, a water line easement over that area once development is proposed. It would be conditioned to provide for that easement.
One question just struck me. I probably would have asked ahead of time if I had thought about that. about that, just to, just to give you kind of a heads-up on it, but, no, I was just thinking about the, the power line, so, you know, that was, there was some discussion that that is, the power pole that's there probably would have to be relocated.
It's a utility pole.
The utility pole.
I don't believe there's any power on it.
Pardon me, utility pole.
Uh, yeah, they would, they would need to move it.
So, is there an existing easement for that? Where, I mean, I guess the question, is it movable? I know physically and engineering-wise, it's movable, but I.
It runs along what one time was a property line. So, it would have been a property line that ran between two lots, but then was cut off and combined into one, or was left over, I guess. But, yeah, I don't see any reason why you can't move it. It's, you know, probably phone and, I don't know, something else.
Okay.
It's a service drop.
Is it? Oh, yeah, you might be right.
It's a service drop, so I think it's very feasible to move.
Okay, all right, good. All right, thank you. With that, if there's no further questions, I'll open up our public comment. Anybody'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Ted Shady. I live at 182 Mendoza Street, immediately west of the, of the subject property. I am a professional engineer. I worked for local government for 35 years, including 10 years as a city engineer. For a number of reasons discussed in detail in the letter that I submitted to the City Council yesterday, I do not believe the city's Mendoza property is appropriate for the construction of a standalone residence. And this is not just because, as city staff actually stated, that it's a tiny lot. There are, as Scott said, other houses, or other lots with houses on them that are small, but typically, they're on the east side of the highway where two-story houses are provided for. So, we're seeing two-story houses go up on those little lots. It's, it is not common, at least in the, in the past couple of decades, I wouldn't think that somebody would buy a lot and build a 900 or 950-square-foot house on it, because we're limited to one story there. The Planning Commission did look at the maximum-sized house that could be built on the lot and concluded that a house, although small, was feasible. However, there was really no analysis beyond that, of the lot's constraints beyond that of, of the building footprint. The lot's size alone makes building a house on it a challenge, but the following constraints, when taken as a whole, I believe, would lead a reasonable person to conclude that it's just not an appropriate lot for a single-family residence. First constraint, and really most importantly, is a matter of public safety. The lot is located at the end of the longest dead-end street in the, in the beach tract. It's a narrow street. It doesn't meet any of the current design stats, design standards, including emergency vehicle access standards contained in the California Fire Code. It's narrower than the standards specify, and really, most importantly, there's no turnaround at the end. Living at the end of one of these streets is definitely a challenge. A house built on this very narrow lot, at the end of this long dead-end street, will be almost impossible to get in and out of, if you think about it. You know, I live, I live 30 feet from the end, that's, the 30 feet is the lot here. I pull into my driveway, and in order to get out of my driveway, I have to pull out, have to back out, and then back down into that 30-foot space there. This house, well, it has to have a driveway, and, but yet, it's at the end of a dead-end, so there's really no way, the only way that they can really get out is to pull in and then to back down the entire street. So, I believe that if, that the city should conduct a turning movement analysis before it considers selling the lot for a standalone house. As was mentioned, the city, the property is also constrained by an important city water line feeds the entire east side of the highway, that will be difficult to access with a house on the lot, and, and especially difficult with a five-foot easement against a Caltrans right-of-way, and, you know, those kind of things.
Wrap it up.
Yeah, those, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I provide a lot more detail in the letter that I, that I sent you. I encourage you to not sell this lot for the development of a standalone residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shady. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, closed public comment, and bring it back to council. And, Matt, you want to start us off in any discussion?
Well, Mr. Shady, Scott, he makes a really good point about the turnaround, the driving on that area, the end of Mendoza. From staff, how would you comment back to that?
My comment would be, yes, it'll be difficult. It'll be difficult, like every other dead-end street that we have over there, where you have a lot that aligns in that same location, you know, either further south or further north. The situation is not unique for the city, so others are able to overcome it, and I think this lot will be able to do it as well.
Okay, thanks. John?
Scott, are the, any of the issues that Mr. Shady brought up different than what you've mentioned previously in our discussion, either today or?
No, they're the same issues, and they're the same issues that Mr. Shady brought up with the Planning Commission when we were reviewing this as well. So, he brought these issues forward and provided the similar letters that he did to the council or the Planning Commission when they made their finding of consistency.
Okay, thank you. Noah?
To follow up on that, if this is sold and there's an application submitted, going through the process, that very question would have to be demonstrated and addressed.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I think the discussion for us is, there are four bids on this. Number four was discounted as far as not conforming, goes back to three offers and staff recommendation to go to the highest bidder, which would be bidder number three. Unless there's any other discussions on this, I would, I would be inclined to support staff recommendation in light of discussion for, with Mr. Shady, I appreciate those, but I would be inclined to go with staff recommendation on this for the bidder of number three.
Second?
I didn't make, I didn't make a motion, I was just saying.
I'll make a motion.
So, any further discussion is great.
I would move that we accept staff recommendation to allow Douglas and Lindsay Castro to purchase the property for $170,000 with a 14-day escrow, to construct a small beach cottage as a second home.
I'll second that.
Just for the record, you may not want to limit it to a small beach cottage for a second home. We're not sure that it'll be a second home.
Scratch that, I will make a motion. Just a very second, that we accept the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation being, offer number three from Douglas and Lindsay Castro offered a purchase price of $170,000 with a 14-day escrow?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, I do appreciate the Planning Commission's finding regarding the expectation of a conforming proposal. Obviously, it's up to the applicant to do what they choose, but I would fully support that expectation as well.
Okay, great. Matt, any comments? No? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0, absent, Councilmember recused, Councilmember Johnson. And with that, we can invite Councilmember Johnson back, and we can move on to item, if the council will so consider, item, moving to item D2. Okay, so, we have a consensus to move to item D2. If we got a consensus with that, we'll move to item D2. Item D2 is a consideration approval of agreement with Moro Bay Senior Citizens Incorporated for Volunteer Senior Van Services, and, okay, I just want to make sure we're not saying Cindy, sometimes we mix up Cindy and Janine. Okay, Janine, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. As you mentioned tonight, you have for consideration approval and an agreement between the city and Moro Bay Senior Citizens, Inc., to establish and for them to operate a volunteer senior van program. This came about, this is kind of like four or so years in the making, it came about when the recession had hit, and there were a couple of years of where state funding for our local transit services had been cut quite a bit, and we could no longer sustain the curb-to-curb dial ride services that we had been performing for almost 40 years. So, council had approved changing to the deviated fixed route that we currently have today, that operates on a one-hour fixed loop, with the ability to deviate off that route for pre-arranged trips for curb-to-curb service. There was some concern at the time that some seniors might not be able to utilize the new service, and there was some interest in exploring an idea like Cambria that has a volunteer van program, or bus program, in their community. And with the help of Councilmember Smuckler, along with a previous council member, Carla Borchardt, they began, I tried to identify some agency that could step forward and become that organization that would oversee and handle the volunteer program. The senior citizens group was initially tagged with that, and negotiations had begun. Over the years, there's been some changes with board membership and presidents, and most recently, within the last year and a half or so, Chuck Stoll has taken over as president, and has really kind of moved this forward, getting development of some roles and responsibilities for both organizations that could agree to on a staff level, and then bringing that forward to their board and our council for consideration of approval. So, that's what you have before you tonight, is that agreement, it's the culmination of all these meetings between staff and councilmember Smuckler and their board. And their board has seen the draft agreement that is attached at their November meeting, and they have approved that agreement with authorization for the board president to sign. The intent of the agreement is to not have a financial burden placed on either the city or SCI in the future. The city had some surplus transportation funds in fiscal year 12, 13, and 13, 14, that were allocated towards a program like this, should it get established and off the ground. And, so the idea is that the SCI would, in the future, do fundraising activities, get donations, grant funding, other revenue sources, that would eventually pay for the operations solely, so there would be no financial burden by either the city or SCI. So, with that, I think what I'd like to do is just, one, I wanted to say thank you and applaud Chuck Stoll, he's really, once he came on board as president, he really saw a great opportunity with this program, and really got their board excited about it, and pulling the trigger to say, let's, yes, let's try this. So, I just wanted to thank him for all his hard work on that. So, at this point, staff's recommendation is to consider the agreement and approve it, and with that, I will turn it over to the council for any questions, comments, and recommendations.
Great, thanks for that staff report. I'll look to Mr. Smuckler, Councilmember Smuckler, for any questions?
I don't have any questions, that's.
You don't, okay. All right, that's, that's a first.
I've had many years to ask my questions on this.
Okay. Councilmember Heading?
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Smuckler for being involved in this and representing us, I appreciate that, as well as staff. Couple of questions in terms of expectations, vehicle usage, et cetera. I believe the agreement is county-wide, and so if Grandma had to go to the doctor in San Luis Obispo, she'd make a phone call to the service, there'd be a pickup arranged at a certain time, and the vehicle would wait while Grandma was being seen, and then bring her back to her place of origin, is that kind of how it works?
Yeah, the final details for specifics are still being finalized, but that's the general idea, is that this would be able to provide service for gaps between the local and regional services. So, a trip, like you mentioned, that oftentimes, a lot of residents here have doctor's appointments in either Slow or Templeton area, and using public transportation to connect locally, then regionally, and then once you're in Slow, regionally there, is very, very difficult. So, this program is something that could fill in that gap and do just that.
Good, because often, there are procedures involved that do require several hours as well, and I'm, I'm sure you talked about that, and that those issues can be dealt with. What might happen if in a month, there aren't adequate funds to continue the program? Is there a plan for either continuing the service or for discontinuing the service?
There is in the agreement, it, as we've mentioned in the agreement as well, and as I mentioned here earlier, the intent is that it's self-sufficient, that there's not a financial burden on either the city or SCI. So, if, they will be tracking statistics, they'll be tracking their budget, if it's looking like they're not going to have enough revenue to cover operating expenses for the future year, then they would look to making adjustments in the number of days or hours that they're operating in order to bring those expenditures down and fit within revenue that they do have. And if after they do that, it's still the case that there's not going to be enough revenues, they would, they certainly have the option of being able to terminate the agreement at that point. So, really, the first, the first thing is to look and see, can adjustments be made to the type of services being offered that would lower the expenditures? If ultimately, that can't occur, then termination of the agreement can occur.
Question would be, what, what's the plan for marketing and getting the word out about this?
I may turn that over to Chuck if he's got some ideas, but they would be doing some promotion, but the city would also be helping to promote it. We have our Facebook page, we have our city website, we have our water billing that we can put mailer inserts in. So, those are the things that internally with the city that we can help out with promoting, and Chuck may have some other ideas that they've already been outlining as far as what SCI would be doing for that promotion.
I just think it's a great idea, there's an extreme need, and besides, or in addition to sending you a check, how can the community get involved? You need drivers, I assume, and those kinds of things, and volunteers?
They do have a list of volunteers that, back when a survey was done, it was probably about a year or more ago, individuals who were interested in whether being a volunteer driver, or helping out, answering phones, or doing coordinate, driver coordination. They have been in contact with them as we've been going through this process, to make sure that they were still interested in being a volunteer, or being a volunteer driver. So, they had quite a good number of responses from that, and I don't know if Chuck has any additional information about the volunteers that they have, but they can, I would assume, contact the senior citizens' office at the community center and ask for Chuck or James, and talk to them about if they're interested in volunteering, or in eventually donating some funding to the program.
Thank you for contributing to the health of our community, there's a great need. I think there will be a significant utilization from the get-go, and if it operates like Cambria, which used to operate very well, and I assume still does, it'll be very successful, so glad to be part of that. Thank you.
Matt, questions?
Questions? No, actually, I don't have any questions, you outlined it very well, thank you, Janine, and thank you, Chuck.
Christine?
No questions.
All right, good. I'll open up our public comment at this time, anybody'd like to speak, please come forward.
Up on the screen, as you can see, oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up to the mic, Chuck. You can hear me?
We know, we can hear you, but I'm sorry. Get the mic up there. There you go.
Hope you can hear me now.
Okay, everybody else has to hear you too.
I hope everybody...
Everybody else has to hear you too.
Up on the screen, as you can see, are some highlights, some points, some bullets. But first, I'd like to recognize two of the really important integral parts of this program, and that's James Costanza and Elionne Wilson. Both are very experienced in this field of transportation. James has owned and owns his own business, trucking business, so he's very familiar with scheduling and personnel. And Elionne, as you're probably well aware, she's with Slow Cog and she is in the transportation division. So we are really, really lucky to have these two still with us tonight and with us forever because they are very dedicated to the whole process. Because we have been doing this, working on this, as Noah can attest, for quite a while. And Christine was once involved very much and then kind of turned it over to Noah, I think. But anyway, there are some critical points here that need to be, you know, managed. Fortunately, what we have is a very giving community, one that's very concerned about quality of life. And we took a lot of our information, we gathered a lot of our information from Cambria because they've had a program there for more than 25 years. There's a gentleman there by the name of Warren Gaye who really has provided us with a lot of expertise and information, and he's just been more than willing to give us anything. He's been down here three times to, you know, to discuss his program and the ins and outs and the pros and cons. And also, we've approached the Cayucus Transportation Program that's been in existence more than 20 years. They have two vans and they do a heck of a nice job with their senior, their senior center over there, which you may know is a thrift store. So they work out of their thrift store. Fortunately, we have a beautiful building right up the street and that's where we work out of. And it's really a natural fit for the senior center to do, senior SCI to do this because we already have staff, we have office, we have the space, and we have enthusiastic volunteers. And we're going to train those volunteers to be able to take phone calls between our hours of nine and four every day. And we're going to schedule and hopefully, we're not going to lose anybody down at Costco or wherever we end up going. Because oftentimes, the issue with scheduling is that we're going to be going to a doctor's appointment and you know how doctors are and pharmacists, I mean, doctors, that takes a while to get through these appointments. So we're going to end up maybe having a little shopping spree and that's how you kill your time because with five different people in your van, it's going to end up taking the majority of the morning or afternoon. So we do have some plans and I think, again, we're going to make this a great success. And it's really determined on two things. One is, we have to be successful. That's the only way that the community is going to support us. And if we are successful, then like Cambria, we're going to get a lot of support, financial support from our community. And if we can't do the job, then the community is going to tell us to return the money and the car and find something else to do.
All right.
So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other public comment?
This is Elionne Wilson, and I just wanted to reiterate a few things from what is on the screen. We really want, this is sort of the first time that we have put out the fact this program is going to happen, which if you talked to Noah four or five years ago, it would say it's a miracle of some sort. The others, therefore, let seniors know that this is coming. And hopefully, they know where the senior center is, of Kennedy Way, near the freeway. The other part is, at this point, we have gathered expression of interest from potential drivers. And James, over there, is going to be working with them, making sure that they fit the profile for the types of trips we're going to do. Maybe they can only spend an hour to take someone to the dentist in town, or maybe they are okay being gone for six hours in San Luis Obispo or beyond. And the last part, indeed, there is staffing at the senior center right now, but they are doing other kind of referrals or information sharing. So we will need to train some of those, our new people, to help with the communication with the public. That's the most important part, people understand the rules, what time, which day, and you're not going to be back until 2:00 p.m. or whatever the circumstance may be. And the last thing I want to say is that you do not have to be a senior to be a volunteer. And you can see that in Cambria, you can see that in Paso Robles. It's very good to have a wide range of ages involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Elionne. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And I'll look towards... Yeah. I know we have a few more minutes, but we have some more discussion, but I'll just take a motion now to go beyond 11 o'clock. I'll make that motion and I need a second. So we have a second by Noah, of all things. And then without any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. So we'll go on beyond 11 o'clock. Thank you. Christine, I was pushing the button to start off. I would just extend a start for Christine on this.
Great work, everyone. I would like, appreciate that the seniors have really stepped up and found it within themselves to commit to the project, which is a little scary. I can understand their consideration of it fully, but I'm very excited about that. Appreciate the volunteers. Janine's been sticking with the project all along and really, you know, showing us how we can do it and showing us where the money is and being very creative about how to fund it. But I really would say that honestly, I think councilmember Smuckler, without your effort and energy, it would not be here tonight. And I think it is a critical component to transportation for our seniors. I think we have, considering we're a very rural place and sort of small, it's wonderful that we even have the transit that we have. I think this personalizing, it's like a really nice touch. So I think it really is who our community is, is to take care of one another, and I look forward to seeing the progress. I know there's some things to work out, I have no doubt you will, but I just do appreciate councilmember Smuckler's efforts to push it forward. Thank you. Congratulations. If we're voting for it, I don't know. I'm going to support it, yes.
Matt?
This issue's been coming up since years ago when Noah and I were on P-Web, and so to finally see it come to fruition, this is really exciting. And I know that with all the issues, Janine, going over the years with RTA and the different struggles with transportation, this will be an important step to kind of closing that gap. There's so many needs in town, so let's, yeah, let's go.
I'd just like to say thank you to Chuck and Elionne and Tom about, just with their help, James, excuse me, sorry about that, for your work on getting this forward. And then, of course, Noah for your leadership and keeping it going through all the time. And of course, Janine, you know, she's been there as well. And I think we have a former councilmember, Carla Borchardt, who was involved in this as well. So a lot of people were involved in getting it here. Glad to have it here and looking forward to seeing the productive use of senior transportation and folks getting out and the positive results from it. John?
Again, a comment that there, from my practice, I see many that are in need of assistance with rides for its procedures, et cetera. And I just want to thank you all for contributing to the community's help and it will go a long way to improve. Thank you so much for that.
Noah?
Thank you. I just want to say that, yes, the city did, previous city council did commit seed funds with the excess transit funds that were absolutely necessary for the current transit operations, as Janine reported. And yes, I have spent a fair amount of time, as well as Janine has, in trying to help this come along and others, but we could have spun our wheels endlessly on this and never been successful without real leaders stepping up, as the three have here tonight, to make this happen, take on a big project that is necessary, as we all know. Currently, there are gaps in our system and the idea with this program is to focus on filling those gaps, not directly compete with our transit program, not to take on people that need special mobility assistance. There are existing programs for that. But just recognizing, if you have a doctor's appointment in Templeton, that is an all-day trip now if you want to take public, or if you have to take public transportation. With San Luis, it's multiple transfers. So this hopefully will help pick that up as well as be a social element, get seniors out at nighttime and the evenings, maybe down here to give us a word or two about their thoughts on council issues and so forth. The idea with these seed funds, thankfully, is based on the budget that James has developed, is it's going to give about two years of operational funds to the program so it can grow and start small and be stable and then build from that. So people that would like to get involved can contact the seniors at 772-4421. And the survey that Chuck and others put out to the community about a year ago did culminate in a nice list of volunteer drivers as well as interested riders. And Chuck still has that list and that's going to be part of the next step. So again, if you're interested in helping, call 772-4421 or go by the senior citizens at the community center. And just really appreciate your leadership on helping make this happen. And I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
That's what I was waiting for. And we have a motion and a second, a motion by Noah, a second by Christine. Without any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five-o. Congratulations. Okay, that leaves us to our last item on the agenda, and I think it's, you know, I think it's still worthy to get through unless... Yeah, good. So that moves us back to item D1, which is Discussion and Direction on Community Choice Aggregation. This is through Public Works. Thanks, Janine.
This is my slide template of the week that I'm using. So we've, we're on to another one. We just have way too many choices on Microsoft PowerPoint. Tonight, we'll be talking about community choice aggregation. And recommendation for council decision is to incorporate this decision regarding community choice aggregation into the 2016, '18 goal discussions later on, oh, well, early next year. Alternatives would be, I bracketed that basically, stop talking about it, don't do anything, or go out for a request proposal right now. Definition about what community choice aggregation is, it's a state policy that enables local governments to aggregate their electric power demand within their jurisdictions in order to procure alternative energy supplies while maintaining existing electrical service provider for transmission and distribution. Basically, it allows us to, the community, to pick where they want their energy to come from. Once formed, the city would determine the sources of energy, but would partner with, in our case, PG&E, to provide electric transmission maintenance and billing services. Currently, our energy is provided by PG&E and the state of California does require a 30, or will require a 33% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2020. PG&E has stated that they are, as of 2014, 27% of their power did come from renewable Some of the benefits of a community choice aggregation program, the city would have the opportunity to share in any cost savings from purchased power. That revenue could be reinvested into energy programs or be used really for any legitimate government purpose. And there's a balance that takes place. There's, in the staff report, I call it the three-legged stool. There's rates, revenue, and renewables. So you really operate off two of those and you result, and is the next one. So if you maximize your revenue and renewables, your rates have to go up. If you minimize rates and maximize renewables, then your revenue goes down. So it's a balancing act with those three components of the program. And it provides the community to choose its power portfolio and opt for more green power. And that's typically what happens in California. Other states, they may look at it a little bit differently and go for lowering rates, higher revenue. There are risks involved with a community choice aggregation. Energy market volatility, regulatory and legislative risk. The government can change the rules on how CCAs operate and can add more risk to the cities. But financial risk is a primary concern due to the volatility in the energy market, although this is mitigated by renewable energies that have more of a fixed cost associated with them. Current status, in California, various counties are in various stages of implementation. Marin, Sonoma, San Joaquin Power Authority, San Francisco, and Lancaster. Other areas are still exploring this idea. Monterey County, Santa Cruz, and Benito County, along with their communities. This county, San Luis Obispo County, in association with Santa Barbara County and Ventura Counties have commissioned a study that they're looking into the local feasibility. The county is also, our county is also looking into partnering with other cities. Specifically, San Luis Obispo passed a resolution in support and exploring a CCA. Morro Bay, starting back in September of '13, adopted resolution 4713, which expressed our interest in exploring CCA, appointed a couple of council members, the mayor and councilmember Smuckler, to participate in a steering committee, but did not commit the city to, or bind the city to participate in a CCA. Path to implementation, there's really about three paths to look at. Morro Bay solo, based on the feasibility study that was provided by California Clean Power Corporation, it's really not feasible. We're just too small to do a community choice aggregation on our own. Join with regional CCA, for example, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara County, Ventura Counties, or maybe a combination of other cities within this county and the county. And that's really still in its exploration stage. Or to contract with a firm like California Clean Power Corporation that would build those partnerships and aggregate those communities together to make it more cost feasible. With that, there's some loss of local control with either of the second options, but, and... With that, there is some loss of local control with either of the second options, but, and with the contracting choice, we could send out an RFP now and start implementation of that. It, I should say that the other risk, because you're paying somebody to implement this for us, that may have, with an RFP, may not have the same motivation as California Clean Power Corporation of it, they may have a more profit-driven idea in mind. Concluding, community choice aggregation offers benefits to the community, but it's not without its risks. Could result in higher energy prices, depending on how we balance that stool. A CC program for Morro Bay, and I didn't complete my sentence here, is only feasible if we are partnered with somebody, and risk is mitigated through that partnership or those regional programs, but with the loss of local control. That concludes my presentation, and happy to try to answer any questions, although I'm not a community choice aggregation expert by any means, but I'm sure by the time we get through this process, I will know more.
Great, Rob. Thank you. Thanks for turning this around for us. I know we have a full agenda, planning, a lot of other priorities, and thanks for getting this on the agenda. We don't really have anybody out in the audience for public comment, so we will open it up for questions from council. Just, I'll lead off with a couple of questions, and we'll just stick with questions for right now, and then, once we're done with questions, we'll get into more discussion. So, the program for Morro Bay, only feasible with partnering with someone, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Basically, we don't have the energy demand to, economies of scale, exactly, to buy the power at the lower costs, and either pass those costs along to our customers, or be able to reinvest those costs. So, really, it is the economies of scale, you need a larger base to support that community choice aggregation. The, I'll leave it at that, and my thoughts will come back to me in a minute here.
I guess part of the feasibility was really to be determined. I know, I'm looking at the notes, so, the, not community choice aggregation, but our California Clean Power Group came in and did a presentation and gave us a feasibility base, you know, they asked for, basically, to get the data for the city to kind of establish feasibilities. And though, I think it seems pretty clear, for smaller municipality to manage a CCA, that seems kind of a challenge, but the feasibility part, based on those, that data, didn't necessarily imply that we were so small that it didn't indicate that we were out of the picture as far as that, you know, cost feasibility in delivering a CCA for this region, it was more of who is managing it, how is, who is brokering the product.
Right. And my take on that was that it really would take either a corporation like California Clean Power, which would have perhaps other clients that would be in the CCA realm, and brokering those costs for several clients. When I was reading their feasibility study, I gleaned from it that they concluded that without other partners, we're just too small to do a community choice aggregation on our own, and would take something like a California Clean Power Corporation or partnering with other communities to make that work.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. You want to start off, John?
Rob, are you familiar with the recent decision by the city of San Luis Obispo and their timeline for putting together a consortium?
No, I don't have the details on that.
Have we been approached?
No.
Will we be approaching them?
We'll be approaching them.
Great. And then, the county recently announced?
The county at their, let's see, it was an October meeting, I think, they authorized staff to fund the Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo County exploration, they didn't have details that I remember after watching that meeting, on the timing of that, I think it was over the next several months, but they didn't have specific dates that they're moving forward with, but we'll be reaching out and contacting them also.
Because they're also reaching out to the city of San Luis, and so there may be something where all parties might come together and sort of make sure we're in the game.
Yeah, and the Board of Supervisors basically said they wanted to do a dual approach. They wanted to explore the feasibility with the tri-county region, but they also wanted staff to look at just locally in this county. So, they made a dual motion at that meeting.
Okay, Noah?
Yeah, Mr. Lavick, we haven't had a chance to present this to the Public Works Advisory Board yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
Okay. And then, some of the discussion that I'm hearing, as people are learning about this, potential options for reinvestment of the funds could be things like undergrounding of utilities, or, as you mentioned, development of local renewable energy systems?
Yes. Or really, the way it was explained to me by the San Luis Consortium folks is really can be used for any legitimate government purpose, like our general funds. There's no ties to be energy-related, although that is their recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, Rob, got a couple of questions. Looking at your bullets up there, do you intend to just follow this through, the path forward? What is, or what is the process going forward to investigate this?
So, we would work with the other area representatives and
Explore.
Explore the feasibility of moving forward as a region. I think it's a dual-pronged approach, is that we would still reach out to California Clean Power, they made an offer at their presentation to update their feasibility analysis, so, to also do that. And then, to bring it forward at the time of goals with additional information, and to determine whether it would be a community goal to delve deeper into this.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. And then, what's your estimation, given the workload that staff has with the staff time moving forward with this investigation, as, I mean, part of the goals, that sort of thing?
Let me hop in there if I could. So, thus, our recommendation to consider putting this on our 2016-17 goals, says we're going through that process, we can balance this against all the other things that are going on, and you can determine where you want our priority to be. I'll also note that we will be, we'll keep our eye on the balls that are going on around us. I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to miss out on something between now and late February, when you hopefully approve our goals, but if we were, we would jump on it and let you know. But I would like to have that discussion in context of our broader goals and objectives for the upcoming year, so that you can sort of answer that question as you lay out all the different objectives you'll have for the staff for next year.
Christine?
I have no questions.
Okay, great. So, back to discussion and staff recommendation, just wanted to back up a little bit, it was back in 2013 that we passed this resolution, basically saying, hey, let's take the approach where we want to explore what this is. And so, basically, Slow Clean Energy had broached the idea of facilitating this topic amongst cities and counties, and so it was a matter of, does Morro Bay want to be at the table in these discussions, which we were through the appointed folks, myself, no, I'm not sure if was, you know, some of the meetings were not, but the meetings were conducted, facilitated by Slow Clean Energy, and it was informational, it was a learning curve, and for everyone that was sitting at the table and what we wanted to do. I think what's interesting, going through that process, obviously, there was interest from everybody, all the, that's what I got out of those meetings, but it really didn't seem to have as much teeth until Slow Clean Power did their presentation to, I think that was, that was one that really kind of put teeth in it and what it would be like. I think everyone had questions about, well, this is going to be hard to manage, I mean, for the city of Morro Bay, for us to do it staffing-wise, it would be a hard one to take on. You know, even the other cities were in the same, feeling the same position, and the county as well. I mean, it's like taking on new staff, just develop this. So, from the perspective of California Clean Power doing their presentation, it was, had a little bit more teeth to see where we could go with that. So, with that, it was a matter of, okay, in addition, San Luis, the county of San Luis Obispo, obviously going through their agreement to do a feasibility study with Ventura and Santa Barbara. My understanding is that the feasibility study with San Luis Obispo County does include, you know, all the cities and unincorporated outline. So, I think it'd be prudent for us to have a stronger contact with the county to find out how we fit into that, and does, will that study be conclusive enough for us as a city? And it'd be interesting to know and to be in contact with San Luis Obispo. Actually, I think it'd be interesting to, and this may be a topic of discussion for mayor's meeting as well, but I haven't heard much feedback from other cities, but it's probably something that all the cities should at least have some idea whether or not the county feasibility study is going to be conclusive enough for the city and where we need to go there. I would agree with staff recommendation to look at this on our goals. It was great to visit this now, especially after California Clean Power. It's kind of hard to have the discussion amongst council on what we want to do and give direction on what the city might want to do without having this agendized. And I think, based on our goals report that we did a few meetings ago, we were basically identifying how important it is to stick to our goals and not get too far adrift on different items. So, there was at least some support with council to explore this, knowing that we were going to be mindful of, you know, how much staff time is going to go into looking at community choice aggregation. But it's also a great way to get another introduction and have actually some dialogue with council, other than a presentation coming to us at a council meeting without the ability to have the dialogue and discussion as a full-agendized item. So, with that, supportive of staff recommendation, would also want to include some outreach to the county. I think that's not getting too far adrift, but at least letting them know we're interested and engaged in this, and we'll be looking into how much we want to be involved through our goal-setting process. And I think those are my remarks. And anybody from, Christine, would you like to make any remarks?
Sure. I think that there is some discussion county-wide about whether or not this would work for our county. So, I'm really happy to see that we're continuing to work in a collaborative process, and it's being driven by the regional approach, because I'm understanding, as we all are, tonight's not going to work for just Morro Bay. So, I think there's significant interest. I remember when this first came forward, the community's interested in it. You know, some folks aren't interested in it, but I feel like if I were just to guess now, I'd say we've got a significant portion of people that do want us to consider it. So, I think putting it forward in the goals discussion is probably where it needs to be. And with that, that's, I'm looking forward to learning more as well, along with everybody else. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Only comment after everything said, it's worth looking into and considering our goals, and let's do it, and give it due diligence.
John?
I would agree, just want to make sure that if it should occur before that and the goal-setting process, that we jump on board getting information, even though we may have limited resources internally, we don't want to miss out in the beginning.
Noah?
Yeah, I would agree. I'm glad we're still talking about this, and I do think it's important for us to express our interest on a larger level. I think at this point, we've kind of, we've talked about it, but I'm not sure all the other potential partners are as aware that we are interested in at least getting more detail, so we can make informed decisions during the goal-setting. I think, too, this is going to be a community decision, we've had some opportunity, but it would be helpful at some point to let the Public Works Advisory Board take a crack at this for their discussion, when that can fit in, and there's enough detail there for them to provide some recommendations and comments.
John?
They could start with possibly a presentation from the same presentation we had a couple of months ago. CC.
California Clean Power.
Yeah. California Clean Power. That could be.
Or Slow Clean Energy.
At least an educational, right, educational session.
Christine, any comments?
I guess I would just reiterate that I think we're pretty early in, I think we were the first, right out of the box, to pass a resolution saying we were interested. So, I don't think they're quite lined up enough yet for us to miss anything between now and February, just from what I'm gathering from my peers and the other cities. We're not going to miss anything. I don't believe at all, yeah, no, I don't believe so. I think what would be important, though, is if this comes back, when this comes back, because it sounds like we're going to move forward tonight on the staff recommendation, would be good to know at that point in that discussion, how many cities are committed, what's the feedback from the county, what are the timelines from, you know, Ventura and Santa Barbara, and how does it all fit together? I think it would be good for me, at least, to figure out when this might need some of our attention, because my understanding now is it's still in the gathering steam mode, not to use a, you know, energy generating
Oh, no, that's always good.
Term. Well, I just want to make, on getting the PWA brought up to speed with education.
Well, I guess what I would say is, before, I guess my caution there would be, what if it comes to goals and we don't put it on? Maybe we should have that discussion with the council level first, and then that would be a natural next step. That's just how I feel.
I was following up on Matt's recommendation.
Yeah, I think at some point, certainly, but I guess I just kind of feel like, I don't know where, I'm just getting the sense, talking to my peers in other cities, that we still have some time on moving this forward, including sending it to the advisory board, too soon.
Yeah, and I would, you know, I agree, PWA's great, but I would also recognize that, from a public works standpoint, we have a lot of things going through our PWA. So, you know, I think maybe the cautious approach would be to, timing permitted, and I would agree that we aren't necessarily going to miss out on anything, but we get to the goal stage and we stick to the priorities that we have on Public Works, and we, once we get through the goals part, we can, you know, readjust, we'll be readjusting anyway, and we can set out, you know, our program for CCA at that time, and then go through the process where we're, you know, having the meetings with Public Works Advisory Board and everything else. That's just my sense on, instead of just jumping into the Public Works Advisory Board immediately, just trying to keep the course on some of the priorities that we have. Those are my comments as far as, you know... Those are my comments as far as, you know, having it go immediately. I'm just looking for other comments. If you feel that that's going to be supportive, I'm just trying to stay the course on some of our priorities that we have.
I'd suggest that we actually do put this, if there's time and availability on their next agenda, that we do give them a chance to at least give a preliminary review of it, and if they do want to submit a recommendation, to at least proceed with analysis. That could help bring this conversation along, and it takes some time to get up to speed on the different options, and that would inform whether or not we pursue this during the goals.
Derek, go ahead, John.
I would disagree with moving ahead with analysis, but I was thinking more of just brain trust in terms of understanding what this whole thing means. And so, the presentation that I got was very educational and helped just with tonight's agenda item by having a background. And I was thinking of a simple, one-time meeting agenda item, where the gentleman came, made a presentation on what it's all about, and they might be ready to go whenever that occurs. That's the extent of it.
And if California Clean Powers can work out the time to do that. Any -- pardon me?
I'm not sure you need California Clean Power. Why not Slow Clean Energy? Or even Mr. Leibig?
Yeah. Okay.
Move staff recommendation?
Move staff recommendation? Noah?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. There we go. And with that, we get into future declaration, declaration of future gen items, and our next regular, and I'm not, I'm just saying, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, January 12, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. right here. Any future gen items? Any Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday wishes to everyone? There we go. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody.
See you next year.
See you next year, and meeting adjourned.